Hey everybody, thanks again for joining us for our Lunch in the No series. We've got people still coming on board right now, so I do want to give a quick primer on today's conversation and then I'll get into a few housekeeping things that we'll roll like we normally do. Get this done in about 45 minutes is that Shelby County is kind of a special place. Tennessee is a special place is that we've got lots of governments. Some of them are on top of each other and some of them work together in tandem. You've got your city governments, Germantown, Carrieville, Lakeland, Millington, the city of Memphis. And I think I forgot Bartlett, we got Bartlett up there too and Millington and all that. So Shelby County government is the government though that kind of layers on top of everything. They're responsible for a lot of things like funding the schools, funding the sheriff's department, funding the court systems and things like that. So there's so much going on with the pandemic, you know, we're opening back up. Are we going to shut back down? What's going to happen with the with the government's budget? How are the governments working together? And man, I got a great buddy and then I'm going to introduce it a bit in a minute. The chairman right now, the county commission. And so the county commission though is a little bit different than some of these other governments. Some of them have a very strong form of mayor and the legislative body is really important, but they don't have quite the impact. Well, the county government is different. County government, the county commissioners got a lot of constitutional power to drive things for the county government. That's why you'll hear a lot of times from so many county commissioners that you might not hear from like Alderman and some of the other municipalities. So anyway, we've got the chairman of the county Shelby County Commission on board with us today. Get into it. So let's go through a few housekeeping items. One, if you're new, I love questions. The chairman, Chairman Billingsley wants questions. We're going to have a great dialogue today. If you wiggle your mouse, you'll see a Q and A button. It should be at the bottom of your screen. Maybe the toolbars are the same, but it says Q and A. If you click that, you can start to send questions in. I'm going to do my best to kind of group questions and we'll get to as many as we can today. And as always, if you go back to the chamber, we're going to video this thing and we're going to send it out. And if there are additional questions, the chairman Billingsley is very apt to want to respond to the constituents of Shelby County. So he might be able to get to some more of those two if we don't get to them all today. But I would say get your questions in, start sending those over to me right now, be it that Q and A button at the bottom. Also, if you're not a member of the chamber, I hope I don't need to say anything. I need you to join the chamber, right? Because all this great content is put out by all these really hardworking people at the chamber and we need members to grow. So share these links, invite more people to this. Next week, I'm looking for Amy Daniels, but she's in at our house right now. Is we're going to start going to every Thursday, but we're going to stay consistent with every Thursday going forward. So share this content with people and let them know what we're doing and especially if you think they'll find value to it. So I did ask for one very special person to me, the CEO and president of the chamber, Beverly Robertson to come on. And I wanted a quick update from Beverly and if she can unmute herself and add her videos so I can see her face and so she can stare at me and say, you know, Beverly, if you want to give us a couple of quick points on what is the chamber up to right now and kind of give us a quick update on on what's going on over the chamber and what your top priorities are. Uh oh, is she going to come back on and maybe Laney, our producer with Waddell and Associates can unmike her and unmute her? Well, while they figure that out, I'm going to switch to our awesome partner, IBank Independent Bank. And Catherine, why don't you go and unmute yourself and pop your video back on too? Is Catherine, man, I really surprised you wanted to come back and deal with me. I'm always, because I harass you all the time, but thank you once again for sponsoring this series and providing it free and letting everyone, even non-members, join the narrative about what's going on to get education. So thank you. What's what's going on over at IBank right now?
Well, as you can imagine, things still look a little different than they did a few months ago. We are still busy, busy processing and accepting PPE applications. If you were with us last week, then you're aware that there's still a lot of unknowns. And so we're working through those. We're on the phone every day with SBA and other bankers and leaders in the government trying to understand how to walk our customers through this process. But it's keeping us very busy, but we're still open, running our normal day to day operations. So just trying to get back to normal as best we can. A lot of us are still working from home, as you can see I am. But yeah, these sessions are incredible and I really appreciate the chamber and Waddell and Associates for creating this online venue so that we could keep it going. And presented and shared in these sessions is incredibly helpful, especially during a time that I think we would all agree could be summed up as confusing. It's great to have experts from different fields joining us to share their knowledge. And today I am, I and IBank are honored to have Commissioner Billingsley with us here today. I can't wait to hear his thoughts on leading through a pandemic. And I want to express my gratitude to our city and county leaders for navigating completely uncharted waters. I think they've done a great job and I appreciate that. And he's also going to talk about budgeting, which is a word we love around here, as you can imagine. And I'd just like to say that whether you bank with us or not, please know that our bankers are here as a resource for you. And if we can help answer questions about your budgeting or anything else, please reach out. So thank you again to Commissioner Commissioner Billingsley for joining us today and a big welcome to everyone in the audience. We appreciate you being here. Brian, back to you.
Thank you, thank you so much. And I can see that, I know that you all have been doing a lot of Zoom and conference calls like this. Thank you, Catherine, really appreciate IBank, thank you. Is that there are, we're having a little audio here issues that go on. And so I really appreciate everybody's flexibility. It's a new world order, but I think I've got our president and CEO on now. So can you go ahead, Beverly, jump in and tell us a little bit about what's going on at our chamber.
Yes, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes ma'am, we're ready to go.
Okay, can you see me too?
I, yeah, actually, yeah, we got you. Yeah, we've got you. So let's.
All right, good, good, good. First of all, thank you, Brian. A call came in, so I apologize. Right as Brian was turning to me saying, let's hear from our chamber president. That's exactly what happened. A call came in and threw everything off. But anyway, thank you all for joining us today. And Brian, thank you so much for facilitating this session. We really do appreciate your leadership and dedication. And I am so happy to welcome our county commission chair, Mark Billingsley, who is a longtime friend. I really can't say enough about the importance of small business and how important it is as the driving engine of the Memphis economy. About 90% of the members of the Greater Memphis Chamber just happen to be small businesses. A lot of people think that the equation is different, but you all are the heartbeat of the Greater Memphis Chamber. And we wake up at the chamber thinking about how we can help, how we can be a resource for small businesses every day. During the past few weeks, it's been particularly challenging and difficult, which is why we've tried to provide Zoom sessions, webinars, elected officials to really inform and talk to you about the opportunities out there in the marketplace for you to get you up to date on the payroll protection program, the SBA disaster injury loan and other programs that will benefit you because we know that if we're to drive Memphis forward, we will drive it forward with you. Each of you have a significant role to play. So as we begin to reopen our business community, we'll be continuing to advocate on your behalf. We've put in countless hours trying to respond to your questions, but please, please visit our website. We have a resource page on the website that has great information, including job openings, businesses that are open and a lot of the webinars, if not most of the webinars that we're doing are now located on our website, plus the most updated information on business opening strategies and the protocols related to that. So Brian, I think that's enough of me. Now more of you and soon more of Mr. Mark Billingsley, my friend.
Yeah, thank you. And Beverly, I think it was a great point that you mentioned that all this content is on the website and it's not content like you're getting nationwide. It's locally specific content. So if you've got some questions, you can go onto the chamber's website and get that and share that with everybody, even if they're not members, thanks to IBank, right? So awesome job. So Chairman Mark Billingsley, and so I'm going to have him pop up real quick as I introduce him and make sure that his video and everything are working is so county commissioners have full-time jobs that are not as elected officials. And so they're all part-time legislators, even though we kind of ask them to do full-time jobs. So the chairman right now, Mark Billingsley, his day job, it's at CBU, Christian Brothers, and he's the vice president of advancement. But he's been elected to a lot of other positions in his part-time role before, like Germantown, Alderman, his vice mayor over there. And right now he represents, when he was elected by people in Germantown, South Cordova, Windike and South, when I believe that that's the, that's the area he gets elected from, but he really represents the entire county with his 12 other colleagues. And so Chairman, if you want to go and jump in, we'd love to start hearing from you. And I know you, you're definitely going to cover the budget issues and some other things. So thank, thank you so much for taking the time today, sir.
Brian, thank you so much. We've been friends for a long time. Thank you for hosting this today. Special thanks to the Greater Memphis Chamber, my dear friend Beverly Robertson. We've been friends for so many years. I'm from Memphis, I may tell from my twang, my southern twang. But so many people at the Greater Memphis Chamber have been friends for, for decades and former leaders have been friends. I also just want to do a shout out to your members, especially Independent Bank and Catherine Gray. Thank you Catherine for all you're doing at Independent Bank. Also for our producer today, from Waddell and Associates, thank you so much. And again, just a pleasure to be here. As Brian shared with you, I'm Mark Billingsley. I'm chairman of the Shelby County Board of Commissioners. Public service is not new to me. Actually, I started in public service in some ways when I was at Christian Brothers High School here in Memphis. The brothers had a unbelievable impact on my life and they sort of led me to a life of service and community engagement that started in high school. And as I grew up, I continued to do community service as a volunteer, like many of you do related to the chamber, given of your time and treasures. And as I grew up, I've started in the nonprofit field. I've worked for United Cerebral Palsy. I've been the executive director of the Memphis Area Home Builders in the good times when we were building 4,000 homes in Shelby County till the, to the housing boom, which the, this, this epidemic, this pandemic right now reminds me a lot of, of housing back in 2007 and 2008. And then I went on to healthcare. I was at Methodist Labattner Healthcare for a decade. And now it's really been my privilege for the last three years to be a vice president of advancement at Christian Brothers University, right in the heart of Memphis and midtown. So again, just thank you for having me here today. The topic I was given was leading in the midst of a pandemic and also budgeting in the midst of a pandemic. Yes, I'm leading. Yes, the commissioners are leading, but I want to thank each one of you listening today for what you're doing to lead in your own companies, in your own families, in your own neighborhoods. I always love our community here because we come together in great times with Memphis and May, with the barbecue fest, with live at the garden. We celebrate our community. We celebrate together, but also in when times are tough, this community is unbelievable how we come together to lift up our neighbors. I live in Germantown. I'm real close to Methodist Germantown Hospital. The efforts that I've seen there by regular citizens to be sure that our nursing staff are fed every night, to lend a kind word, to honk the horn. It's happening all over this community. Memphis Food Bank, MIFA, our own community services department here at Shelby County Government, for being sure that people are fed, that people have a roof over their heads, that they're getting utility assistance. And so we're leading like each one of you in the midst of something we've really never faced before. One of the things that we've had to do is we've gone to this online format like we're having today at the Greater Memphis Chamber. When the, when the pandemic hit, Shelby County Government has been around for 200 years. And for 200 years, commissioners and mayors and leaders have met together around a table, talking, sharing, collaborating, making decisions. This, like each one of you, threw a curve ball at us. And at times when there's 13 commissioners in a room, it's really hard to get a consensus. You have to have seven votes to, to pass a resolution, pass, pass an ordinance, make a decision on the budget or whatever. And doing that online was really a challenge, but we were up to the task like each one of you. And so on March 23rd, we had our very first meeting. A number of us were at the emergency command center. We then went after a sort of a dry run, we went through and we've gone to totally online. We've been meeting for, for over a month online in committee meetings and full commission meetings. We've also continued to engage the public. Fortunately, there was an executive order by the governor to allow us to go to online meetings. Today, I actually got another executive order by the governor that extends our ability to meet online through June 30th. I'm hopeful that we won't have to utilize this where we have to meet. Because like each one of you, I really like transparency. I like being candid and honest. And most of that typically happens when we're looking at each other and each other's eyes and we're, so much of communication is, is face to face. And so I think there's been a little bit of a disconnect, talking to a computer screen like I'm doing today. But we're leading and I want to hit on just a couple of things to Brian and the group on some things that we're doing a little differently in Shelby County Government. As you may see on the news every day, we are a part of the COVID-19 Joint Task Force with the city of Memphis, but also with every municipality. As Brian shared, county government is a little bit different. We're almost like a gigantic umbrella. So we have seven municipalities inside Shelby County. So if you live in Carrieville, if you live in Germantown, Bartlett, Arlington, Lakeland, Memphis or Millington, we have seven municipalities. Those all fall under Shelby County Government. What is, what is our role as Shelby County Government? Well, we focus on four things, but they're really large things. And we've seen that right now with the pandemic. So Shelby County Government is a little bit different. We focus on public safety with our sheriff's department, our corrections department. We focus on economic development, which the chamber does a great job of partnering with us on. We focus on education. We are responsible for funding education and I'll talk to you about that with the budget. That includes, we fund Shelby County Schools, we fund charter schools, we, we fund all the municipal schools because they get their fair share of our funding formula. And then lastly, we fund healthcare. And if they're certainly, if, if you've not had an appreciation of healthcare before, you've seen it on the news every night, you've seen it in your own lives with Baptist Hospital, Methodist Hospital, St. Francis, our health department. I want to really recognize Dr. Elisa Househalter, who is really our general, who is our leader at the Shelby County Health Department. You've seen her every night on your news channel. She is leading. If today, if you drive over to Mullen Station, our headquarters has over 100 health department workers working from basically seven in the morning until eight o'clock at night. They don't stop, they're doing everything. They have nurses there, they have even epidemiologists there. They are doing contact tracing of individuals who've been affected. They're also working with businesses that have had employees who've been affected by the coronavirus. So I can't say enough about the Shelby County Health Department and especially Dr. Househalter. Also, those people on the front lines, our policemen, our firefighters, our nurses and our doctors. This week is National Nurses Week. If you know a nurse, send them a note today and tell them thank you. Brian, I'm just watching the clock because I'm a talker. So we've done, we've done a lot of new things because of the coronavirus. We've funded $2 million in investment in critical COVID needs. As you may have heard, the city of Memphis has received over $100 million in coronavirus support from the federal government. Shelby County received $50 million. We've spent about $3 million so far. And just at the last commission meeting, we approved $90,000 worth of overtime for our healthcare workers. We've spent $2.5 million on face mask, on PPE and other needs directly for the coronavirus. And so this Friday, we're, we're going to have a budget meeting, actually tomorrow, and we're going to dive deep into our budget. And we're also going to talk specifically about the coronavirus.
So Chairman, if we could keep it high level for me, I'm a simple person.
Sure.
I've got a few questions about the federal money coming down. And there was a lot of questions earlier on, is, is the federal money going to be stuck at the state? Is it going to impact your budget? So you said you got 50. Does that, how does that impact your overall budget? And can the taxpayers expect anything different based on the fact that, I mean, you get, you get what sales tax revenue, you get fees, property taxes?
We do.
I'm trying to, I guess I'm wondering about the overall impact that you think that this pandemic will have and if the federal money will, will help augment that. And I'll have a few extra questions I'm seeing about that.
No, Brian, it's a great question. Shelby County Government actually received $49.9 million, 49.9 million. And as I shared with you, we spent about $3 million out of the gate immediately. There, the federal government expects receipts, they expect real spend as it relates to those dollars. I wish it was as easy as taking the 49.9 million dollars and disinjecting that into our budget. The Shelby County budget is 1.4 billion, 1.4 billion. Certainly $50 million is a lot of money, but there is a requirement that there's a direct nexus between the 49.9 million dollars that we'll spend and real needs. Now, I think the, the government has been very fair and Brian, we actually have the 49.9 million dollars in Shelby County right now. It is not being held up at the state level or the federal level. The good news is it's been fairly easy to access and it's here in Shelby County, but we have to be good stewards of those dollars. I will tell you that I think the city of Memphis has been pretty creative and innovative. The, yesterday or day before, Mayor Strickland announced that he would not be raising property taxes. Right now they're not looking at layoffs, but in reality, I think they're being creative regarding their $100 million in ways that they're offsetting expenses. I mean.
Yeah, well, so Chairman, when you, when you get into a budget of 1.5 billion with a, with a B, a big chunk of that goes directly to the schools. That's, that's almost pass-through money. I mean, you guys have some, some, some controls over that, but they have their own elected body, the school board. 50 million is not a big impact on that. And I guess with the financial downturn that, that actual taxpayers, property owners in Shelby County are going to be facing going forward, do you, I mean, can you lower their property taxes or the fact that we're not getting as much sales tax? Does that impact us up? And you might have to start thinking about increasing fees or taxes. I guess I'm trying to figure out the impact on the actual, you know, taxpayer.
No, Brian, excellent questions. The, the budget that we're looking at is 1.4 billion, 1.4. Out of that, and again, I'm just going to throw just a couple of numbers at you because we have a 600-page budget book. But property taxes, Brian, out of that 1.4 billion, property taxes amount for $789 million. You also talked about fees and, and our fair share that we get from the state, that's 169 million. You also talked about local sales taxes, that's 133 million dollars. I'm really concerned about that. Again, I don't mean to pick on Germantown, but I live in Germantown and it's been, it's almost eerie to see Saddle Creek empty. I mean, absolutely, it's been empty for months. And the city of Germantown depends on those local sales tax dollars, just like the county. Fines and fees. We are hearing a lot, Brian, from our elected officials. They are trying to also balance budgets that roll up to our budget and fines and fees and permits, people don't realize it, but that's over 109 million dollars. So this week I paid my car tags that came up for renewal. I paid that fee. Right now we have 7,000 cases backed up at the court system. Each one of those cases brings appropriate fees. Our property taxes again account for 789 million dollars. And then we have some other ancillary fees. But here's the part that's also tough, Brian. When you talk about cutting your way to balance a budget, and again, it's the role of the mayor to bring a, really not a balanced budget, but what, if you really read the fine print, a consolidated budget, 31% of our spend, it's not surprising, Brian, is personnel. And so, you know, when you talk about cuts, it's, it's difficult because you've got 31% with, with his personnel costs. Also, you know, Brian, you talked about education. Education accounts for, and people need to really understand this, we, we will spend $427 million toward education because it's one of those four things that we're charged with doing. And so education takes up 30% of, 30% of our constituents and our taxpayers' money. So you've got 30, 31% accounted with personnel. You take another 30% for education. And then you start looking at the judicial system and the sheriff's department. It really takes almost the balance. When you, when you get into things like debt service, it's not surprising, Brian, that's about 10%. Some of those things, and it's so, and I'll be quiet so you can ask me another question. It's, you know, I've been a nonprofit my, my whole life. And so it's all about serving people. You know, there's so many big pieces of the pie. We certainly serve people, but when you get down to things like community services that are really engaging with people, the rape crisis center and some of the things we do, that's a really small portion of our budget because some of the other pieces are so large.
So Chairman, once again, I'm, this is why, you know, I voted for you. I hope others vote for you because you really understand all the, the details of a budget. It sounded like to me on my quick chicken scratch that the property taxes are the property taxes, but the fees and the sales tax, which I certainly, I don't know if the fees are going to be impacted at all because people still got to get, go get their car tags and all those things. But the sales tax somewhere around 3% to 5% of the budget, which means you could lose maybe 3% to 4% just because of a lack of sales tax. I don't know if the 50 million you get in, it's not quite that number to offset that, especially when you have all these added expenses related to the coronavirus that's going on. So I guess I'm just wondering, we're kind of maxed out on our sales tax because of the revenue, the referendum that occurred last year. So there's a state law that caps the sales taxes.
Right.
Do you think right now that we're expecting cuts to services? You don't know or, or, you know? Well, that's all, that's the only tool you got right now, isn't it?
Well, Brian, it's a great question. I shared with the media the other day, the, the tools and the mayor and the county's tool shed are dwindling. You know, it is again, initially the, the mayor of Shelby County's job to work with his staff to present a budget to us. He did present a budget to us. It had some things in there that were unpopular and we all face that right now. I'm about to celebrate my 19th wedding anniversary with my wife. I had planned to surprise her and take her on a really nice trip this year and not wait till the 20th anniversary. Well, guess what? We can't do that this year, not just because of health concerns, but I'm trying to monitor the extra dollars that we have because you know, the, the future is, is, while I always believe the glass is half full, we've got some challenges ahead. So I'm cutting back. Mayor Harris proposed $13 million in cuts in Shelby County Government. He also proposed a registration fee or a wheel tax. I don't know if there's a worse word than wheel tax other than cancer. And but as mayor, again, I try to put myself in, in other people's shoes. You have to make up a lot of revenue right now. You have to make up a lot of revenue right now. To, to your point, Brian, you know, we're depending on, um, $133 million in local sales tax. And so what are the other things in the tool shed that the mayor or the commissioners can use? The idea of a $16.50 wheel tax was floated. Uh, I think it failed, uh, three votes yes, eight votes no, and I think one person may have abstained. There's a lot of mistrust with the wheel tax or registration fees. It initially started out as something to fund schools, it continues to fund schools. But when the thought of coming up with revenue, again, the tool shed is, is fairly empty. But one of those things that's in the tool shed is a wheel tax. Again, the proposal was $16.50 for every car that you own. That would have raised about $10 million. And then about $13 million in cuts. Brian, the, the wheel tax was strongly shot down. I don't know if it can come back up. And so, days ago, we were looking, once the, once the wheel tax went away, we're looking to fill a $23 million gap. And, and, and again, those numbers tend to fluctuate. Tomorrow, the Shelby County Commission and the mayor are going to come together in one room. I've done everything I can as chairman to try to bring everybody back together. It'll be the first time we're physically in a room together. I've, I've rented out a room that holds about 250 people, but I'm only going to put about 25 to 30 people in it. And we're going to do some social distancing, uh, so we can talk through this. But, um, Brian, to your,
Chairman.
Yeah.
Yeah. So Chairman, if, if, I, I, I get it, you know, we, we, we're doing a lot of guesswork right now. We're trying to find some cuts. We really can't raise the sale, we can't raise the sales tax without permission from the state. And I think that's already capped out constitutionally maybe. Should people start to, start to think about the fact that their property taxes go up next year if we don't start making cuts? I mean, like, what are, what are some of the things that like, people should just not, not be concerned with, but start to be watching that you do down there?
Great question, Brian. There's not a great affinity right now, Brian, to raise property taxes. Uh, we have one of the highest property taxes in the state of Tennessee. Again, there was not a, a, a lot of support for a payroll tax. That was a bipartisan, excuse me. There was, uh, there was bipartisan efforts to kill the wheel tax. And, and also I think right now there's pretty much a bipartisan effort not to raise property taxes. Also, Mayor Harris has also said he would not utilize the opportunity to go to property taxes. Part of our problem, Brian, is I think you've had, uh, some good county commissioners on the county commission. Some of those that have rolled off in the last two years as well as the new body. Uh, overall, uh, the commissioners are pretty fiscally conservative, but almost to our fault, Brian, in that, um, our property tax rate has been, uh, static for quite a while. Uh, we've tried to lower it as much as we possibly can. Even when we did reappraisals, we tried to keep it down. And so, taxpayers and homeowners have really benefited from the fiscal conservativeness of, of our county commissioners. You know, I don't think anybody saw the coronavirus coming. You know, it's easy to second guess now saying, you know, maybe we shouldn't have fought for that penny or two pennies. A penny in Shelby County on your property taxes is equal to $1.9 million. And I can remember sitting in rooms with Mayor Luttrell and my colleagues. And I can tell you Commissioner Schaefer, myself and Commissioner Rowland, we argued very strongly about not raising taxes and, and sticking and not only not raising taxes, but decreasing taxes. And we were successful doing that.
Yeah. So Chairman, and I, you know, just to frame, um, the conversation, I mean, we as human beings come together and live in cities or underneath governments in exchange for services, right? To try to, to try to pull services, to get those services cheaper, garbage, fire, ambulance, healthcare, whatever those things are. So we're really stuck with two things. Either we figure out a way to streamline the services. I know you guys are looking at that, the coronavirus with those $100 million potential loss of sales tax revenue, maybe some fees in that also, we're going to have some real impacts. So let's, let's kind of get to the next little bucket here of, of, we're kind of slowly coming out of this pandemic. And I know that you're going to be evaluating the budget and get through that. And there's a lot of talk, and I'm going to get this down, is that lots of medical experts are, are saying that, look, out of it, but we're probably going to have to go back in it at some point. At least you need to be prepared for that potential. You guys have done a plus job on phasing in, phasing back out. You've got these layers of people that can kind of come back out and still be careful out there, everyone. Absolutely be careful. Is there talk, and are you guys planning for another kind of reduction in the fall or at some other period of time if needed?
Well, I, honestly, uh, Brian, I think the reduction is being proposed now. I think there's been a lot of numbers floating out there that if we can't balance the budget, Mayor Harris and commissioners have been pretty realistic about what layoffs look like. I've been pretty, uh, realistic that, um, if we can't cut our way out of this, we're looking, I mean, the, the other thing we haven't talked about is layoffs. And to get $10 million in Shelby County government, I think you're looking at approximately 300, 320 layoffs. Those are real people. Um, we have proposed for FY 2020. We have 5,700 people that work for county government. And some people may say, you know, Mark, out of 5,700 people, what is 330 people? Well, 330 people are the people that live next door to you. They go to church with you. They're sending their kids to school. They're, they're scraping by. They're, they're, they're working really hard day in and day out. So 330 people mean a lot to me. They mean a lot to the mayor. They mean a lot to the commissioners. But Brian, you know, again, there's very few tools in the tool shed. And if we're not willing to cut the budget and, and make some drastic cuts, really, you, you do have a couple of things. You have property taxes and you have layoffs. And again, if the, if the, um, if there isn't a, a flavor for property tax increases, you're looking at laying people off from county government. A couple of months, a couple of weeks ago, Mayor Harris said, hey, we've got three months left in this fiscal year. Let's cut, let's cut back on our expenses the last three months. That was not well received by elected officials. It wasn't well received by about half the commission and it failed. I think that would have been a really good, and I'm trying not to be political today. But knowing that we were in the, that we're in a pandemic, you would have thought that the last 90 days of this Shelby County budget, we could have adjusted and cut. We did not choose to do that. And so it was really split, uh, the commission in half. And again, I, I'm not trying to throw stones at other elected officials, but they were really adverse to cutting any expenses the last three months of this fiscal year. And so, uh, our fiscal year, Brian, ends June 30th. And so, like most businesses out there with the Greater Memphis Chamber, they're making cuts right now. I believe that county government needs to look at some serious cuts.
Yeah. And Chairman, I, I, I should frame, obviously you're one of 13 votes that make that decision. You got to get seven votes to, for a budget?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Correct, Brian.
You got to get seven votes. You, you're working with groups and we all know what we used to think about group projects in college. Really, really tough to work with group projects. It, it's a, you know, I, I guess you, you make cuts, you increase taxes or you add more debt. And, and it, I, I don't know what, what you could utilize with the people after the community, so to speak, to kind of understand the debt rating and the tax rate is, is, most of us live in, you have the county tax rate. On top of that, you have some municipality tax rate. I've got kind of both, uh, where I live. I live in the city of Memphis in Cordova. And, and so I've got those, the, the highest tax rate, actually seven of the highest tax rates in the entire state are right here because of all these layered tax rates. We have the, you know, multiple governments and stuff. So I, I get a little concerned about debt load and bonds and financing because the state has really come down on saying, look, you guys just can't keep rolling over this debt load.
Right.
Have you heard anything from the state that says, look, we're not, you know, they had to do this with the city pension a few years ago and say, we're going to come over and take over all this. Is there any talk with the state government with, with debt load or anything yet?
No, because you know, honestly, Brian, uh, uh, all of our mayors have done a great job, uh, over the years. I'm, I'm just going to pick on our previous mayor, Mark Luttrell. Uh, when I started paying really close attention to county government is when everybody in town could tell you the county was 1.9 billion with a B, $1.9 billion in debt. And during the Luttrell administration, he paid off over $900 million in debt. Uh, we were, we're, I believe we're a little bit less than a billion dollars in debt. Debt service, uh, Brian, accounts for one, $149 million for Shelby County, $149 million in debt service. The other thing that it's, it's good for people in the chamber to understand and rigorous citizens to understand is all of us need a rainy day fund, uh, to have in the, you know, in the bottom of our checkbook, which I would call a fund balance. And so, our fund balance requires us to, to stay between 20% of our budget to 25%. You want to have about 25% of your total, uh, budget in, in, basically in reserves and a fund balance. We're getting closer to the 20%, which is the minimum threshold. Again, the current, the budget that was proposed, uh, asked to dip into our fund balance to the tune of $6 million. I'm not real excited about that. Again, I'm not throwing stones at Mayor Harris. Again, he has choices he's got to make. Um, but I'm, I am not real excited about going into our fund balance. Each and every day, that's about $80 million that fluctuates up and down. And so again, there is so much complexity to this. It is not as easy as turning one switch off or just saying, oh, we're going to cut this. It's pretty complex and there's so many requirements like the fund balance that again, limits those, those choices, uh, that are in the tool shed.
So Chairman, one of the questions that just got posed and it, and it's, I don't think you've watched one of our Lunch in the Nose yet. Some people try to make fun of me and give me a hard time by texting me their questions instead of using the button. Cause they know I got my phone with me, but I do. And so, I, I don't even know how you answer this question, but it's a really good question, which is we're getting all these different communication things from, we're getting it from, you know, the health department, we're getting from the state, we're getting it from the feds, we're getting it from the different city governments. You're this overarching county government. Is there anything you would ask of the businesses? I'm not asking you to solve this problem. Maybe it's up to us as constituents to solve this problem too. Is there anything that we should be doing as business owners to try to push for, I, I don't even know how to answer this, but to try to deal with all these mixed messages? And where do we turn to for accurate information about what's going to happen locally? And let's just kind of keep it on that local bucket.
Well, I'm, I'm not trying to do a commercial for the greatest, Greater Memphis Chamber, but I, I have a lot of belief in the Greater Memphis Chamber. Uh, for seven years I ran a trade association regarding housing, which is actually the largest investment you'll ever make in your life is your house. I think if you're, uh, in a professional organization, I, I'm a vice president at Christian Brothers University. I've, and I've been in fundraising my entire life. I would encourage, uh, a couple of things, Brian, honestly. Look to those people who've got best practices, especially in the midst of adversity. This is something like we've never seen before. Um, I would encourage people to reach out to the Greater Memphis Chamber. If you're an accountant, I'd look to your, 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 your parent, um, professional organizations. There is a lot of really good, accurate information. I, I was the director of the Home Builders Association in 2007, when the housing bubble burst. One of the best things we did as an association was bring in experts, uh, to, to inform and educate business leaders. They couldn't necessarily afford to bring a Brian Stevens to talk about, um, uh, any one topic. But as a group, they could bring Brian Stevens in or another group to help them through this, uh, through an emergency. And we have an emergency right now. The other thing, Brian, again, I'm just talking off the hip, that businesses can do is, you know, try to hold on to your employees to your, the best of your abilities. If you've got to make adjustments, do that. Where I work, we're making adjustments right now. We're doing it as a team. We're sticking together. And if companies can stick together, make some sacrifices, I believe at the end of this, I truly believe, Brian, we're going to come out stronger. It's sort of like, uh, living through a really tragic situation. You remember those people who stood beside you in the business, even when their, their paychecks got cut by 20%. I was, I was in the front yard the other day with a really good friend of mine and his paycheck has been cut by 20%. And he said, you know, Mark, I'm hoping we're going to be back to business the next month or two, but we might not. But he's really grateful, uh, right now to have a job. He's working harder than ever before. I think a lot of people don't realize that most of us are working even harder than we did before. Just because we're, um, not in person does not mean we're, we're not working. I mean, we're working from our computers, we're monitoring what we're doing. A lot of companies are looking at metrics. But, um, my two words of advice, Brian, are to businesses to seek, seek, you know, seek professional organizations. Also talk to other people in your own field. I know during the housing crisis, Brian, you know, back then builders were very, very competitive. I mean, they were really, you know, doggy dog. But you know, when times got bad, builders got together in rooms and they said, as a group, what are we going to do? You know, we've got all these lots available or we've got banking issues. Banks at that time, at that time, we're getting together in rooms together, going to say, how are we going to deal with? Lots of things. I think again, we're stronger together. If you can find that, that circle of people, that'll help you lead. To me, Brian, the last thing you want to do is sit in a room, uh, by yourself because even for me, some days it, it gets overwhelming.
So Chairman, I think that that's, um, that we're kind of coming up on our closed time here. So let me, I, I always like to try to encapsulate what I've learned and so we can summarize it. That's a, that's a really great point is one, there's so much information and content coming out there. Get several different sources. Trust not just one expert,
Right.
but several experts. Get that information out there so that you can kind of learn, don't panic, don't, don't freak out. And, you know, I think a lot of great people are working on getting us through this. I, I do encourage, uh, our members, uh, the business community to watch what's going on in the county budget and watch what's going on in your municipalities budgets. And then ultimately, next year, the state budget, right? These things do impact the flow of business. And, uh, I think that Amy, one of the things we might want to do is stop talking about the past, start talking a lot about the future and how we're going to be driving more business to, to grow our economy. It's a great time to grow. Um, you know, every difficult times of disruption is a great opportunity mixed in there too, right? So, um, Chairman, thank you so much, uh, for, for joining us, letting us know all the hard work you're doing behind the scenes to get all this crazy budget stuff going on. Okay. So next week, Thursdays, Thursday, I'm going to say it again because I've gotten some questions, texted me, et cetera, is we're going to do it on Thursdays, high noon. You'll see emails about that. Thank you so much, Chairman, for, for coming on board and taking his time. He's, he's down there working right now. So we're not going to do it twice a week anymore. We're just going to go to Thursdays and we want you to share that information out. And I think we've got Keith Norman, uh, who's been a guest before. He's a real powerful warator, uh, former in, uh, anyway, he's got a lot of credentials we'll, we'll, we'll cover with you next week. So, um, thank you so much. We'll send a summary of this out and we'll get together with you next Thursday, high noon. Thanks for joining us, everyone.